Good evening, I'd like to call to order the September 5th, 2019 Bulling Green Town Council Meeting. We do have a forum. Councilman White will not be with us this evening, nor will the council members be with us this evening. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing this evening. The public hearing is in regards to a notice of application to USDA for a loan grant fund. The background on this application is, as a condition of our approval for a loan and grant fund for water distribution system improvements, the USDA requires a public notice of application and discussion at a public meeting. This public hearing serves to meet those requirements. No action by council is necessary at this time, as the application has already been made. The advertising ring in the pre-land garden is 20, and our caddies give the obligation of funds, whether in our application. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. If anybody would like to address council, please, on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address, and any concern. Second call? Third and final call? And this public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is the public comments portion of our meeting. At this time, anyone from the public can come to the podium to address any issues, or any concerns, or any comments to council that they please. As stated before, just state your name and address, and typically, public comments are kept to a three-minute time. Is there anyone that would like to address council?
I've never just canceled before, so bear with me. I'm Patricia Ernest, and I live at 218 Maury Avenue in Bulling Green. I had concerns about the street work that's been done on Maury Avenue. This past spring, there was a water main break right in front of my home. Public works fixed it, but when they laid the gravel, the gravel has since settled and has created an indent, and every time it rains, it fills up with water. And I have the same issue at the entrance to my driveway. With the new resurfacing of Maury Avenue, when they put up the road closure sign, which was brought for my driveway, the traffic was going to have to enter part of my driveway and drift because the road was blocked. It has since created an indent, which is now another water collar. Now, they resurfaced Maury Avenue yesterday, and for my concern, they did a very poor job. There is an indent in the roadwork where, when you stand in my yard and look out, you can see the dent. And that's going to cause a drainage problem, which is going to create water into my yard. They also left asphalt pieces on the roadwork there, which I think I'm going to have to be responsible for clearing up, because no one has touched it. And finally, when they edged the roadway, they created places where the asphalt spilled out into the gravel, and it's little patchwork. You've got a clear line, then you've got asphalt, then you've got another clear line, you've got asphalt again, which is unsightly. They came through with shovels, and we were digging into the asphalt, which made it worse. Now it's crumbling, and it just looks terrible.
We'll get that noted, and we will be in contact with VDOT. And if you would get with Melissa tomorrow, or maybe after, if you're still around after the meeting, but don't feel like you need to stay, so we can get a detailed report, because we have several concerns with some of the paying operations in town, and we're making a list, we're conveying those to VDOT, and we may also ask you to call VDOT too, just so we can have more voices with VDOT.
No problem, be glad to do it.
Actually, I think we can get Tracy, Tracy just went into the office. She's going to get your business card, so you can call Melissa tomorrow, and we can get that noted.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
I didn't cancel, Mayor, I canceled. Audience, I'm on South Main, and I was here some months ago, and since all the construction is occurring, I was hoping the stormwater drains that I addressed months ago were going to be put in between intersection of Main and Milford and Main and Farm, where my house is right in the middle, and there's a lot of drainage problem. And I remember you saying you had heard about it, so now I'm asking again. This would have been the perfect time to do this, when the streets were already torn up. So I really, really hope that these stormwater drains will be handled, but I'm worried to death about the rain we may get tonight, tomorrow. It is a terrible mess, Anna. I had been out there, I could have done a better engineering job of all this. It curvature, we should go up to David's and walk through Maury and look at the curvature on our side of the street. It's like, no wonder there's a drainage problem. It's awful.
Can we add that to the list to VDOT? Because, as you know, the streets and sidewalks are VDOT's issue, we will pass that on to them again.
Okay, I was with the impression that the town had to make the contact.
We will make contact, but we also ask the residents to make these phone calls.
Okay, that was my understanding, I just didn't process that.
We're also, we're asking the public to also make these concerns. The more voices that VDOT hears, the better we're going to do.
And I can tell you from my experience, that a lot of times, VDOT responds better with citizens than it does to Carolina.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it, but I'm just following procedure. But I will contact them. Also, I would like to let cancel, all y'all know, Mr. Policeman, sir, I have gotten almost hit, I don't know how many times, trying to turn into my driveway doing all this construction mess, and I am thankful I'm standing here today. I have never seen such driving. People have, they have tried to pass me when this lane was blocked with the construction. I'm trying to turn, let people got to pass. It's ridiculous.
I can vouch for the police department, that they're out there writing tickets and pulling people over. I sat on my front porch and watched that. At the same time, we cannot be out there 24/7. There are going to be incidents where, I mean, I was sitting on-
It's just in broad daylight.
I was sitting on my front porch on Sunday, watching a deputy, a police officer, write a ticket, and watched a Mercedes with Maryland plates go by our deputy, I mean, our officer, and they don't pay. And I don't know how we change that culture of citizens that are in such a hurry.
It's like it's killed, then something happened.
I don't know.
And same thing, standing here, same thing.
I can't fault their police department, they're out there writing tickets. You see the police reports, they're writing more, more tickets, and more tickets, and more tickets.
I understand, and I understand, and I thank you for what your staff does, the staff, but it's a real problem. I walk sometimes, and I tell you, I get nervous sometimes.
It's not just a town or an area issue, I can tell you that.
But, thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a quick comment. Tracy, if you'll take this note down at the end of Gill Street for VDOT, the gray gravel that they use on there, it spread out about 10 feet up into my yard, around the old cul-de-sac of the end of Gill Street. Doesn't look real good in the light, I appreciate if they can get it out of the yard.
And I have another citizen, if you're making notes, the other end of Gill Street, the apron, is when they were here pouring concrete and fixing all the aprons, they sure miss Gill Street. Gill Street, they don't miss. And I have a citizen on Gill Street made that comment to me also. So both of them.
On Maury Avenue, I had some residents there that were calling me this afternoon too, and I'll just, I know we've already had one discussion of Maury Avenue, but even up on my end, which is, I guess, close to Main Street, whatever they put there of that rock stuff, I don't understand that. And people are concerned about the safety of that. If you go off the shoulder and it's a narrow road as it is, then you're going to be, if you were driving a motorcycle, or a bicycle, or whatever, and it's not even, yeah, it's not even, they haven't done the grading throughout the whole road there. There was a lot of it that's just missing, it's like they just randomly decided, maybe there was a rationale, but.
They have, they filled it, but they need to pack it now.
Yeah, on Maury.
They filled it, but it's a mess.
Yeah, Maury Avenue, it's-
No, that would be a no, not on the West End of Maury Avenue. They don't need to be soldiered.
I know they did a missing.
It's a disaster.
Yeah, I guess my question, or everyone's asking me this one question, are they concerned themselves as finished? Does anybody know the answer to that?
The end of Maury near Main Street was done by a different contractor.
Yeah, I know.
They're done, they're considered done. The other end is going to be slurry, and when they slurry that, they're going to come all the way up to Main Street and cover the part that's already paved, to give it a uniform look. But they are going to have one more surface on that eighth part near Main Street.
I need what you're saying on solid. A little cash.
So, Maury to a certain spot that has been asphalted is complete with the gravel on the side. Yes, they need to come back and pack that gravel and make sure that's correct. The far end of Maury is going to be slurry, and when they come in to slurry that, they're going to do even the new asphalt to make it all uniform. I have a meeting with, I'm going to be walking down Maury sometime this weekend with another official, that we're going to address this more with VDOT, even higher at the level. And Tammy, I may reach out to you also, just to make sure you're aware, but we have a lot of concerns on Maury, on the condition it is, so we're going to try to do our best to get this addressed and cleaned up. We're not going to get a new Maury Avenue, we're not going to get any drastic improvements as far as width, or anything like that, but we can at least make what we have more presentable and a better issue, and definitely address any water standing, standing water or anything along those lines. But, we are aware, my number's on my business card, before we go to social media all the time, please reach out to me, because we'll fix it if we know about it. And social media's not always the best place to address stuff.
So Melissa, here's a question for you, is, are we scheduled to have some type of a final walkthrough, the project is done, it's over and done throughout the town, is somebody going to come to town and talk to us about that? Is VDOT scheduled to do that?
So there is an inspector that is out there as the roads are done, and he inspects them to make sure they meet VDOT standards as they are completed. I can speak to Lynn Keenan, who's our residency administrator, and ask her if there's going to be one final, you know, drive-through to make sure that everything's completed. I do know there was discussion, there's going to be a punch list if things are not quite right, and they're going to come back and address those. I noticed, like, on Maury, there was a patch of asphalt that, in the middle of the road that was crumbling, and things like that, they're going to address.
Yeah, like Mr. Ernest, an issue that she has up there, and make sure that town knows that it is, we've been done, because, you know, if they're in Maury Heights, I mean, Metta, yeah, I mean, if it's done, I mean, we need to know that. I'm a little concerned if that's the case, but just make sure it's finished.
Just one quickie, so you're saying that they are, because the VDOT guy I talked to this morning, it appeared that he said they will re-slurry all of Maury, because it's such a disaster. So will they put rocks and re-brade the shoulder of the road?
That is not part of this project, but it's something that I'm going to look at this weekend with another official, so we can take it above this residency level. I don't ever want to speak badly about somebody in a public meeting, but we will, we will be addressing several of these issues with VDOT at the local level, to give them a chance to fix these issues, and if they don't fix them to the satisfaction of us, we will proceed further.
All right, I know that's all you can do, but I'll be out there then when we're on the road.
I mean, it's the little things. If you go down Lafayette, they put slurry to the edge of every one of the driveways. There's two driveways that come up a little bit shorter at the edge of the thing, they just have a straight line. It just, yeah, it seems petty, but it's the aesthetics of the town.
Well, I don't think it's petty, it's, if that was my crew, I would have fired them, because one of our homeowners-
Well, here's the issue, they're doing it to the VDOT spec, is what we're being told. But it's the little things, when you care about your job, you do the little things, and obviously, they're not caring about their job.
I mean, they covered over manhole covers, that in itself was, and they didn't even know it until I said, "You covered the manhole covers." They didn't even know where they were, so, I know it's frustrating, as someone who lives on Maury, but-
It's not just a Maury, this problem is not just a Maury issue.
The whole town, exactly, they just, they did.
I don't want Maury to get, I don't want Maury residents to get a bad name, but the complaint about, this is a county issue right here.
It's the whole town, start to finish.
So, we will make that list, and we will work with them. Is there anybody else that would like to address council? I probably should have started this with the meeting, we're going to try to not rush through the meeting, but we want to get everybody home in a timely fashion, we have staff that lives out of town, we know we have a pending weather situation coming, so I don't want anybody to think we're rushing to it, but we want to get this stuff addressed in a timely manner. Next item on their agenda is our staff reports, we have our Bulling Green Police Team here for the police department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before I actually get into my report, I had several people I wanted to acknowledge tonight. One is Mr. Jeff Lloyd over there, his wife, son, and a daughter. Yep, y'all come on up. Come on up, come on up.
They don't bite.
So, Jeff and his wife have organized what they call an airside fee behind their house, and in doing so, they have taken donations over the last several months. They have graciously donated $500 to the Bulling Green Police Department. Is this everybody with you? Hi, guys, you can stay up till anymore. These are the organizers, thank you, guys, but they've graciously donated $500 for us to purchase two nuclear shotgun, which we currently don't have. So that's a big deal for us, and we're very thankful that town residents and people on the outside come together to support that for all of this. I just wanted to recognize these folks.
Yes, thank y'all, thank y'all very much.
The second thing is, if you look at my council packet, the second page is a letter from Immigrations and Customs related to the escapee, from the Caroline Gibson Center Down 301. Obviously, I won't, I'll square the details here, but they, the lead field agent works the letter, thanks for our efforts. But I was working anyway, so I wouldn't respond in any way, so it's no big deal to me, but Justin, come on up here. Sergeant Cecil here was at work at AP Hill, and I called him, I said, "If you can, if you can give me a little extra help, I sure would appreciate it." He came right away, and we rode around looking for this guy for a very good time, so I'm, he certainly went above and beyond what was required of him that day, just to be able to show you, and Justin, Sergeant Cecil here is an auxiliary member, he's not a brother of pain, so him, you're such a fan, I think it's up to him. So, thank you. Third thing is, is we have been out for the last several weeks with the Alan Myers payment group, and just everybody knows, there's three payment groups. Alan Myers is the contractor of VDOT to do the Main Street, Broad, and Port North, the actual milling and the new asphalt. Whitehurst is in charge of putting down the official base coat for the slurry, the slurry papers is here for the elements. In talking with several VDOT officials, I don't mean to beat this dead horse, but VDOT does have to come out and do a final inspection of the whole town. So, again, the calls, and I feel in a bunch of them too, the calls that the citizens place to VDOT are very helpful, but again, it's not done until, until the VDOT representatives come to give a sound off. Now, obviously, there's a time to play. With that said, does anybody have any questions tonight?
Just a quick question, so, I wasn't aware, do we have a police foundation that accepts donations?
Yeah.
So, how do you purify them?
The town is able to accept donations, and if they're marked as allocated towards a certain cause, they have written on their check that they'd like it to go to the Bulling Green Police Department, we deposit as a donation, and then allocate to the expense which was donated.
So, does the donation is specifically used for shotguns, or can be used for anything you need?
This would be used for shot, that's what the donation, that's what the donor reports.
Gotcha, all right. Do you have any ideas of starting a foundation? Gift giving and donations are very ambiguous, we thankfully know Jeff and the rest, thank you very much. There are some people that donate, we don't know if there's something reciprocal they expect, so I'm just wondering if maybe a foundation should be started, so that those donations are not flushed through the town, but right through this, I don't know if any of them, maybe it's-
I was just, I think for a police foundation, I'm not sure that our department is of a size to want that, but the donation, maybe the next time, could be presented to council for council to accept, and then, I guess, technically, the budget should be amended, and that money should be appropriated to the police department for extended term.
In the budget resolution, we had in there that any donations could be automatically appropriated. So should we put it, take it from them to accept the donation? Can we amend the agenda tonight?
Or we can do it next, or we can do it next month. I wrote a note, hey, your resolution of appreciation also, should we, we can talk about it.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
There's red tape there.
Still concerning that we're getting DUIs everywhere, which is a good thing, we're getting off the street. Next item on the agenda is the public works report. Billy here, are there any questions? Any questions for Billy on this report?
Now, I did hear that we were, I think the chief went over and talked to the sheriff's office about that, and getting on the alert system that we used to be on a while, two years back, but there was a big concern about the water leak on Maury, it went for a couple days, it didn't even get called in, and then, you know, they couldn't reach anybody on it, and then when it got turned off, nobody was notified that the water was being turned off or the water leak. I mean, it is a big deal when people lose water, you know, especially somebody right in the middle of the shower, and they turned off because they got a water leak, and nobody was warned of it. Are they working on that?
Well, I'm supposed to get a call from the sheriff's department, and I never got one, I think ended up getting one from there.
Yeah, so we probably need, we'll discuss on stuff, we need to make our public aware of who to call after hours for water leaks, maybe we need to do a social media this last?
I think on the water bills.
And if I can speak with Mr. Mayor, Council, this was addressed at a staff meeting, and we're aware that this was a problem of the color that we may wear, so we are currently, David and I, Chief Lutzkin and I are actually working now to get in touch with Caroline County, to figure out how to get on the Caroline County Alert System. The steps are actively being taken, and Chief Lutzkin can probably speak more to that, because he's been hand-on with the county, but just so that you all are aware, the public is aware, staff is aware, and we are making active steps to correct it and make sure that this doesn't happen in the future.
What else would I was asking for, so thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, the second, the other concern to that is, they don't know who to call when there's a leak after hours, and I try my best to stay up to date on these social media, but it's, and I try to remind everybody, hey, call Town Hall, or call the number, and the emergency line, and if I see it, I make the notification myself.
I think they have my name and number on their water bill.
I will update the phone message, so if anyone calls after hours, it gives Billy's cellphone, but his cellphone is on the water bill, it says for after-hours emergencies to call, and I believe the chief has already been in contact with the county, or already signed up for Everbridge, which is who does Carolina Alert, and we already have our own group, and 1,100 people are signed up for it.
About 1,100 people, but the main thing is, they were very welcome on this process, the county was, the tip was right in, and signed us up within the hour. They made several of us administrators with the ability to notify the Carolina Alerts, but it's imperative that the public has the Carolina Alert System on their computer, on their phones, that they receive and work. It is inclusive of Bulling Green, and it's set up for people who live in Bulling Green. So that system is up and running.
What's it called?
The Carolina Alert.
We need to make the public aware that they need to have that on there someday, I know that.
We also have a job about taking in fresh ones next week. But we want to work the bugs out. I signed up, I think I still need Billy's help.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Billy, I did have a question for you. Are all of our fire hydrants now up and functioning?
They are.
Everything is good and good, safety-wise, no issue?
Yeah, they're all great.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys putting one down in front of Phillips House, we appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, very good, thank you so much for getting that done.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Billy. Next item on their agenda is our events, the next round of development, coordinated from your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my title just keeps getting longer and longer. Just to start, thank you all for having me tonight, Music on the Green has been going great, I did make the executive decision to cancel tomorrow night's Music on the Green. Town Hall is rented for a private event, so we don't have an alternative venue option with Town Hall, so we have decided to cancel that event, public safety comes first. I will say that we have had great crowds leading up, it seems like this Music on the Green has just really been a build-out, and we're really seeing the numbers and participation. I want to personally thank members of council, you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out to Music on the Green and supporting it each week. There was a concern last week with regard to the light, to lighting, as the sun goes down, goes down a little earlier in September. Last week was a little bit of a unique situation, because we typically have bands that we require, or that we ask to bring their own stage lighting. Milford Station is just kind of a grassroots, bluegrass band, and they don't- bluegrass band, and they don't come with all the bells and whistles. They come with the basics. So, so it was very dark out there. But we are aware of the concern and making steps to address it. We do have our final Music on the Green next week. So I encourage everyone to come out for Wildcat's Band. The Bowling Green, Virginia Main Street, I just want to mention that there is a public meeting planned for community heart and soul on September 12th at 6:30 here at Town Hall. And we want to encourage all the members of the community to come to this meeting. This is an opportunity for you all to give your feedback on what's important to you in Bowling Green, what you would like to see in Bowling Green, and what you think the future looks like in Bowling Green. So again, the only way that this program is successful, it's a revitalization, revitalization program. It's national. We are one of the first municipalities in Commonwealth to, to enter into this. So it's very exciting. And we, and again, it's just, it's only successful if we have lots of participation. So please spread the word. If you see bugs about it on social media, please share it. And we're really excited about it. So September 12th at 6:30 here at Town Hall.
Just confirmed, that's open to not just town residents, Caroline County residents?
That is open to anyone, everyone who is interested in revitalization in Bowling Green and interested in seeing the momentum that is, that we're currently seeing, catch and take off. So we really want to encourage anyone who is, is interested in seeing Bowling Green as a vibrant, economically vibrant community, we want you to come and share your opinions because your feedback matters. And we are listening. So yes, thank you for clarifying. The USO Big Band Concert and Dance is right around the corner of that schedule for September 21st. This is our third annual USO Big Band Concert and Dance. It's a lot of fun. And I just want to encourage members of council as well as the community to get your tickets. Tickets are going fast. We've got a 20-plus piece of big band orchestra, the Fire and Fire Big Band that will be performing. And you'll notice in your packets that the Caroline Historical Society, who we've partnered with in years past, has, has asked that, that we partner with them again. And last year, we did not give, we did not make any donation to the historical society. The year before, we did. Last year, we did not. This year, they, they've sent a letter saying, hey, we'd love to partner, we'd love to help, as we've done in the years past, and we'd really like to see 50% of the proceeds to go to the historical society for grant opportunities and things of that nature. So that is up for your consideration. The concert is, is happening one way or the other. And it's, it's in the, on the books. So it's a lot of fun. And I really encourage you all to, to get your tickets and encourage your friends to come as well. Fall Clean Sweep is right behind the Big Band Dance. That is on the 28th. This is always a successful event in Bowling Green. It brings folks out. It gives residents a good opportunity to purge and get rid of things that they, that they don't want around for the holidays. We're actively getting addresses for participants in that. We recently, in the last year or two, opened this up to Caroline County residents. So they have an option of selling their goods in the Town Hall parking lot. So it's, again, it's one of those build out events that just seems to be getting bigger and bigger each year. And I just encourage you all, if you, and residents, to sign up if you have things that you'd like to put up for sale. And if you don't sell it, we are partnering with Goodwill to, to haul off whatever, whatever you, you don't sell. It's a good opportunity for residents and visitors alike. Harvest Festival, just a small event in Bowling Green. But that is also around the corner. And I am knee deep in planning for that. So things are going very well. We've seen a small increase in, in vendor participation this year. It is our 30th year, so this is a special year. I included the graphic in your packet. However, excuse me, due to the high resolution of the graphic, it seems like it got cut off in the eight and a half minutes. Excuse me. So here's the poster. It's pretty cool. We've got an Elvis tribute band this year, which I think is going to go very, over very well. And we also have a reggae band, first time in Caroline County, I believe, to, to have a reggae band celebrating in Bowling Green. But it should be a really great performance. Mighty Dash, one of the Zaire Five are incredibly talented and bring a very fun, high-energy musical performance with very conscious lyrics. So we encourage you all to come out and tell your friends to come out too. And if, if you know people who are crafters or have their business, this is a great opportunity for exposure and promotion of, of business and, and the arts. We, I have, I'm actively seeking sponsors for Harvest Fest. We have received good news from McKesson that they are willing to sponsor our public, our pumpkin decorating station, excuse me, for $1,500. And they will also provide a dozen volunteers for the event. So our relationship with McKesson is great. And this is a testament to how corporations, companies, organizations do want to be involved. And they don't always just want to write a check, but they want to show their community support. So that's a great example. We also have secured a sponsorship from REC, from Rock and Electric Cooperative, as well as Atlantic Broadband. We did receive the unfortunate news today that Waste Management is unable to financially support the Harvest Festival this year. So that was a little bit of a disappointment. We also reached out to several under big money vendors that we spend money with, such as Centas and Sydner and Kelvick, just so you all know. So we're waiting to, to hear from them and actively following up. Finally, you'll notice under the consent agenda, there is a, an item for a donation to Caroline County Public Schools for the Bowling on the Green Virginia Wine Fest. This year, we did have a little bit of higher expenditures on the event than we normally would have. We had to purchase wine glasses. We had to, we had to, there were, there were several things that made a difference in terms of our expenditures. And we didn't see the ticket sales as high as we would have liked. It was right around the same as last year, actually a little bit less. So our net revenue on the event, we did realize the net revenue. We did cover costs and we did come in under budget. Our net revenue was around $375. The owner of Old Mansion, as you all know, has asked that we make a donation to Caroline County Public Schools as a condition of having the event on their site for free, completely for free. And so they have asked that we continue making the $1,000 donation to Caroline County Public Schools. I will say, Maria Luz, the owner of Old Mansion, came and spoke with you all last month. And she did sell personally 60 tickets to this event. So I think that needs to be noted. And what we're asking is that $625 be taken from the contingency fund. That was a recommendation from our town manager to make up for that, for that difference and to give the Caroline County Public Schools a donation of $1,000. I urge you all to just consider again that the value of this event, as it, as it is for branding our town with regard to our, our history and thoroughbred horse racing, and the, the property itself. And also ask you to consider the fact that this venue is donated to the town for free. You couldn't spend $1,000 to rent this property for a day event. So, so there is value here. And I would just ask for the consideration of council to pass that under the consent agenda tonight. That is all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I'd like to commend these big bands. I think they've all been wonderful. I've attended every, with the exception of, you know, work. Has that happened? I have a couple questions. Who paid $600 to each of these bands?
No, we do not. It's negotiated to each, based on each.
Each one's different.
Yes, ma'am.
And we only have one sponsor, Atlantic, the bank?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that valid?
It is valid, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next question. Why do we have seven this year? So usually we've had either four, five, what? Why did we have more? And then my concern too is when we go into September, it's getting darker. So that concerns, not just on the upper land, it's all over. It's dark.
Sure. So I can answer your questions. The reason the Music on the Green was expanded into the first two Fridays of September was purely based on feedback from both town council and town residents. So that, those dates were presented to council on the projected event agenda for 2019, and it was passed. This is our first time that we've ever extended Music on the Green into the months of September. It was done because we had such a positive response from Music on the Green in the past. And it was, and we were asked to expand it or extend it, extend the event. So we did. And it was passed by council. That is why. Again, this is new for us, moving into September. So the sun is setting earlier and we are up against this issue with the lighting, which I mentioned. I think that when the bands have their lighting out there, it, it definitely helps. That said, I'm not sure that it's enough. And if we continue to have Music on the Green, you know, extended into the months of September, we certainly need to look at some sort of lighting for public safety reasons. And that's noted, and I'm aware of it. And public safety is always my first priority on those things. Did I answer all the questions that asked now? Okay. Are there any other questions for me this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Are there any questions for the, on the county clerk's treasurer's monthly report? Do you have any comments?
I do not have any comments.
Okay. The county manager's report is in their packet. Like I said, he was unable to be with us this evening. Next item on the agenda, I do have a couple of questions that may be a response back from the county manager when they come back in in regards to the USDA grant fund. I noticed in here that we are going to be obligated to $18,000 a month. Go to revenue of about $200,000 for the process. I want to know what our monthly amounts could be to pay back this loan. As it was forward, I do not see that in here unless it's the $18,000, $218. If that's the case, if it's the $18,000, $218 a month, which is $200,000 a year, where is that allocated in the budget that we have on the table for this upcoming year? Where is the county going to get the revenue from?
So this loan isn't, we're looking at at least three years, opposed to engineering and plumbing. So that's not allocated this time, but that's something the county is going to work through and figure out during rates and how to get that money.
Yeah. And it's not concerned that it's a couple hundred thousand dollars in due additional revenue that we'll have to come up with somewhere. So just note that in there. We'd like to have that discussion. Not council. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent of the, I'll make a motion. I'm accepting the consent agenda just. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gaines. Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second. Is there any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the invocation parameters. At its August meeting, a consensus of council, consensus council of Cambridge is the way through. At its August meeting, a consensus of council expressed its desire to hold prayer before meetings. Parameters on whom will be invited to say invocation, how they will be chosen must be set. And I will turn this over to the town attorney. There should be a resolution or policy in front of, a policy in front of everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I prepared a draft resolution, which is a legal policy. The idea is to kind of give a little bit of the rationale for having indications to put in the meetings, as well as to set the parameters and to give clear guidance to staff in terms of how people who might want to offer an invocation may participate.
Okay. So at this time, we need to take this policy and resolution into consideration?
Yes.
And is there, what's the pleasure of council? I know we're receiving this this evening. Are we going to act on this? Do we want to have town review this? Bring it back at the next town meeting and act on it? What is, what?
As a matter of policy, I think, given we're handed a document to make, and to vote on it and to make a resolution. I'd say we hold it over and make sure everybody understands it thoroughly. It's not a complicated document, but yeah, there's some important implications that we need to make sure that we understand. I don't know what the rest of the world of council is, but that would be my suggestion.
And Mr. McTiernan, one thing that I included in here, I, I said, you know, religious leaders from the Bowling Green community. I mean, that's certainly up to council's definition if we modify it a little bit.
Okay. So is council okay taking this, review it? And we'll, we'll come back and we'll act on this. We'll add it to the agenda for our October meeting. Thank you. Next item is, we'll have our council committee reports. We'll start down here with Valerie.
We do not have. We do not have a planning commission meeting this month. We will, has been rescheduled and we're on our October meeting.
Yeah, we discussed a few things. One of the things was the grant for the water sewer, I mean, for the water project that's coming up. We discussed ways that it is to be repaid back, and which we've been talking about the next time, next meeting. And also, I said, I don't think we're about it. That's it all we got.
Okay. Media did not meet this past month. We have a special meeting coming up shortly. And we're setting these states of that. There has been some interesting activity and interest in the 301 corridor where we bring some neutral ones there on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I met Reese on that meeting. And just, yeah, it was mainly about being at a future water situation. Don't shoot us, but it's coming. Sidewalks and utility committee, we did meet last week. We did discuss the flooding in between 212 and 218 there on Mari Avenue. So we're aware of that. And also on Davis Fort, the repair, it's like it's going to be a little bit shorter than the 14 foot that we originally anticipated. And the sidewalks on Mari are still on track to be completed, repaired, and it's in Main Street.
Thank you.
I have maybe something you can say after your next meeting with sidewalks, streets and sidewalks. I've been noticing the stoplight down at Route 2 and Robbs. We're getting a lot of traffic now, especially on the weekends. And I wonder maybe y'all getting the VDOT, or getting the Reese, getting the VDOT, see if they can come out and do it at times during the lights with the amount of traffic we have. A lot of times, it seems like they're real short, the traffic's backing up at certain times. Just see what they can come out and do with the lights there on Route 2 and Robbs.
Mainly, mainly on Sunday afternoons.
Yeah, Sunday at weekends, terrible.
I guess Joe also wanted to know something, but I have, oh, you touched on some.
I'm sorry, I just don't want anything. Official news brought to my attention about the intersection of East Broadus and Main here. Now, people are not aware that sometimes there's two lanes. When they go straight, they block in the whole. them the whole lane because there's no line and stuff. But I believe that might have been brought to Reese's attention and we may be putting up some temporary striping, but I was going to ask him tonight, but I will follow up on that.
We can, we can add that to the list and we could be that note of, we need some temporary lanes, especially on the, on the Main Street section. Something that I saw, back to social media again, was someone on our read, the townspeople asked, is there a love sign in Bowling Green or where is it? And I'm thinking that I missed something, but I'm, I'm not sure that we do have one, but.
I asked Virginia Tourism Corporation.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, do you also, what that entails for us to do? Is that a public, I mean, is that a citizens-driven thing that we give one made and?
As Ms. Cannon mentioned, this is a program through Virginia Tourism Corporation and we have every ability to apply for it. We do the only responsibility that the town and the avenue, and it would have to, through the town, or perhaps through the Bowling Green, Virginia Main Street group. The only thing that the state requires is that we, we build it ourselves with, and we pay for the materials. So, you'll notice around the state, different jurisdictions, municipalities have their signs built out of things that relate to their town. So, large agricultural folks may have the O out of a big tire tractor, or tractor tire, you know, things like that. But we would just have, and we would have to find a designated place to put it. I think that the Fort Hough song would be lovely with the county would be memorable to that, but I'm sure there's other options and, and I'd love this, I would love to see the love sign here too.
Yeah, I think if maybe market the Bowling Green Main Street group or the EDA wants to coordinate it, if you go to the page, people already have ideas such as like a wine barrel for the O because of the wine festival and the wine and Old Manion. There's already, I think if we drive it a little bit like the Christmas tree.
Yeah.
It will take care of itself. I'd love to see the love sign also. That's all I have at this time. I have to. Is there a motion in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to move that the town council convene in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the town managers in point of contract?
I'd like to motion of going closed session to discuss the town manager's, incident in point of.
I second that.
And we have a motion by Mr. Gaines, a second by Mr. McDeermon. Is there any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we will recess for five minutes and hear the changes. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, at this time, is everybody certified that we, all we discussed was what we went in the closed session for regarding the town manager's contract? Do you certify?
I certify.
Yes.
Yes.
I certify.
I'll make a motion that we vote on the extension for the town manager's contract. You need ear extension.
You made a motion that we approve.
Yeah, that, that we approve.
Just a quick, we have a second, a motion on the floor for Mr. Gaines that we approve the extension to the town manager's contract.
I'll second that.
We have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We will do a roll call vote. We'll do a roll call vote.
Can we gain yes? Number half of us?
Yes.
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 Valerie, yes.
Okay, unanimous, the motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn.
Yep. So, I can have a question or a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.